I need some money.
All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. We do have a good crowd in front of us tonight. I guess there's some special recognition we're gonna do tonight. I don't think they come to hear me talk anyway. I do wanna preface this by saying that tonight our livestream is not working due to some technical malfunctions with Windstream. Our audio will be recorded and it will be posted online tomorrow, but the actual livestream will not be available tonight. So just wanted to let everybody know that. All right, first off, we're gonna ask Pastor Michael McLeod from Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church and Elizabeth Baptist Church to come give our invocation.
God bless. Just honored to be here tonight. One of my heroes. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Love you. Let's go to God for the invocation. Again, God, we love you and we praise you. We glorify your name. We thank you, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for another opportunity to thank you. And Isaiah, he kinda told us that a child would be born and on their shoulders the government would rest on it. And now, God, we're here tonight at this government facility reminding us that government rests on your shoulders, so regardless of what comes about, you'll balance the scale.
Yes, dear.
But, God, you sent one of ours to come to do what you have asked. And, Michael, you wanted to remind your people that you have a requirement of us that we ought to do justly.
Lord.
Please touch our hearts so that we can always do justly. God, then you also reminded us that we ought to love mercy. God, we can use a little mercy right now. Hey, we need some mercy. And then, God, you reminded us to walk humbly with you. But, God, I think we kinda forgot about what that meant to walk humbly with you, God, and so I ask that you touch our heart to remind us that to walk humbly amongst you is to be like you.
Yes, dear.
To touch the heart of the less fortunate, to be there for the citizenry of this county to do what your son would do.
Yes, dear.
So again, God, I thank you and I thank you for the drum major that always reminded us that we are somebody.
Yes, dear.
Hey, don't forget us, we are somebody. We still wanna see that to table. So we are putting our trust in this board that we have now, when our legacies is stepping off, but it will never be forgotten. And we ask this board to remember what "thus said the Lord." Please do justly. Please love mercy.
Welcome.
And please walk humbly with God. Hey, and then no matter who's in the chair or who's in the office, we'll be all right. So, God, we thank and we praise you. We give you glory. Hey, and we look forward to the future. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, let us all say, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Justly mercy.
All right, thank you for that, Pastor McLeod.
God bless.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna read our ethics statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearances of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board tonight? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. So are there any conflicts at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll move for a motion to approve the agenda presented.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Mann, second by Commissioner Little Reed and Commissioner Gatewood. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have the one item, the budget amendment. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Mann, second by Commissioner Little Reed and Commissioner Gatewood again. Any discussion on the budget amendment? Hearing none?
I had them, well, that's all right, go ahead.
So we'll take our time.
That was a... I thought I had marked it, but I didn't. That's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so any other concerns? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. Now we're gonna move, well, I think it's the right page here. We don't have any appearances tonight, so we're gonna move down to the public addresses to the board. And so I just wanna clarify, we do have a sign-up sheet and I just wanted to ask up front, there will be a time set aside at the end of the meeting to give public recognition of our retiring commissioners. So if you signed up on this sheet, I obviously wanna honor your, and respect your, you know, wishes to address the board, but if you wanna address the commissioners, you'll have a time at the end of the meeting. So there's two names on here, Crowley and Ms. Osana. Do you have business to present to the board?
No commissioners.
Okay. Is there, Avis Crowley?
Yes.
You have an item, okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that beforehand, so let me read this statement, then I'm gonna call you to the podium. There shall be a time set aside at each regular meeting of the board for public comment. Each citizen who wishes to speak during this time must sign up on a sign-up sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Each citizen shall be allowed three minutes for their presentation. All citizens are expected to follow proper decorum and shall not use profanity nor defamatory speech. The public is expected to remain seated except when leaving the room. Only presenters listed on the agenda or recognized by the chairman will be called to the podium to address the board. Commissioners are expected not to comment on matters brought to the board during this time, but to delay action or comment until staff has had an opportunity to research subject matter and report necessary and relevant information to all members of the board. So at this time, we're gonna call Avis Crowley or Crowley? Okay, you're fine. I couldn't see you behind the podium, so I didn't know who I was calling. Okay. And I will ask if you will just speak directly into the microphone so our audience can hear.
Well, everything's over my head.
Well, you can pull it down.
When you're five feet tall. I lost two inches in my life, I don't know where the height lies. But take my word, it's gone. Okay. It was in my heart to come here tonight and to speak of this. I really didn't want to, I tried to talk, prayed my way out of it, but it didn't work, so here I am. I may make enemies of my peers, I hope not, but you got to please the Lord. He's the one that's gonna send you where your soul is going. I was on October the 22nd. I was told, I went to do my voting early, where I couldn't be out in the crowd because I'm slow and old and everything that goes with it. And while I was on the voting property, I wasn't told the truth and I was given a misrepresentation of something. And I resent it. If you want me to do something, let me know. Well, I would like to address the issue about the, well, in case the board wants to see it, in case they hadn't seen one, you pass it around and it'll come back to me. So I had to honor, I was given this sheet and she held it out to my hands and of course I crossed my arms, 'cause you don't reach for some things, it might be a bill, it might be a summons, I just crossed my big fat arms. And I go, uh, what's that, ma'am? What I do, what I do with it? And she said, to my face, she said, this is a copy of the ballot. And I said, I looked at her, she said, it's gonna explain the ballot and it make it easier for you and it make your voting easier. Well, I'm from Laval, I fell for it. I reached and got it and I look over there and I thought, well, I would like, the issue on the, about the Democrats, Democrats, which is an issue, I don't care Republican, Independent, fill in your own name on the ballot, I don't, that's not my problem. I was handed a filled-out ballot that I was told, take back there with you to help your voting, make your voting easier. Well, I didn't go to college, but I did get a wager for a lifelong education, so bear with me. I didn't read it till I got home, 'cause I put it in 5:10, I put it in my Walmart bag hangs off my gear stick to catch all my trash. And I thought, no, that wasn't what I saw, so I just threw it in there and went ahead and voted. Once I looked at it, she was showing me up, it down the front, copy of ballot, real big letters for me. But it wasn't a copy of the ballot. I found out, a true copy of a ballot is the ballot, what it looks like when it's handed to you to vote. That's a plain empty ballot. It has to, you go on the computer and you check the New York Times and the Charlotte Observer and the Express, I was told, handed out a copy of the ballot and it was empty. Okay, I was told it was empty, okay. All right, once you fill out that ballot and try to hand it to somebody, that turns it into a cheat sheet. It's filled out for you and they, all you have to do is take it behind there and just fill it in where they got it filled in and you don't have to use a brain cell and you can look.
I understand, too.
And I just presented it because whatever happens, don't let anybody take away our freedoms to vote.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate your presentation and we will address, we could talk after the meeting, I don't know if it was an election campaign official or...
Oh, no, 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 it was just giving us a copy of, to take back when we voted if we wanted to copy it.
Okay.
And when you do that, you know, that's cheat sheet.
Okay.
And the only thing left I wanted to say was, I would, anybody have any influence, if anybody have any influence for Channel 9 News, Steve, Jason Strzynski, I'd like him to contact Avis Crowley or meet him.
Okay.
I thank you and I thank all of you and I hope I didn't go over.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for that.
I can't get up, so I can't keep it. It just upset me. Don't take away my freedom. We ain't got many left. I can imagine. Take away our votes, we're walking on it. It doesn't hurt us, the commandments off the wall.
Okay, moving on, we'll move to our manager's report. No, 'cause Ms. Osana was gonna speak at the end. Okay. Ms. Stotler, can you speak into the mic?
What I have tonight, first thing is a recommendation for a bid award and that award would be for the filter rehab project for the county's water filtration plant down on the P D River. And with us tonight, part of that engineering team that has helped us get this far is Ian Yancy and he can explain any technical difficulties, but we had three bids received, all three were appropriate and the lowest bid of Dellinger Construction out of Union County, Monroe if you will, is recommended, six and a half million dollars and change.
All right, so what you're needing from us is a motion to move forward with awarding the contract?
If this isn't a contract, this is the recommendation from the engineer, but like you just said, the contract will be prepared based on this basis and then brought back to you for a future approval.
Okay, so, all right, is there any discussion from the commissioners before we make a motion? Do we have anything from Mr. Yancy or Mr. Sessions is here from utilities?
Could you let the audience know about the fact that this one bid came in so much lower, it's something that was really good for the county and what the engineer bid versus the actual bid that we got?
And the engineers have researched it, they have met with Dellinger representatives and they feel safe and secure with their bid, they're happy to get it. We're in their backyard, so to speak, since they're in Monroe and since our engineers have verified it is a valid bid, we're prepared to, and I'm standing with them, I have used Dellinger Construction Company in the past, they're a good contractor and we feel like they'll do a good job for Anson County.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this item? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve, approve that request, the six and a half million dollars for the water field, water rehab project. Mr. Chairman, I'm, go ahead.
Making a motion that we accept that bid as the contractor that we would move forward with.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Bricken, second by Commissioner Gatewood to move forward with the Dellinger contract and that contract will be presented to us at a later meeting for official adoption of. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on.
The next item is, I read a previous meeting, I was asked by the board to see if I could find some grant funding to be advanced to the Anson Rescue Squad for the purpose of paying their salaries. At that meeting, if you may recall, the presentation may indicated that they need something on the order of $424,000 and change. And I have researched it through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Central Indiana Council of Governments and a number of other entities, including ATRM Health and I can't find, and also, last but not least, the North Carolina Journal Assembly. And I have yet to find someone that will provide us with a grant to pay for salaries. So I don't know if you had anything else that you might want me to add to that.
So it appears that we have exhausted all avenues that we know of to find funding to meet that $420,000 request. The manager's recommendation, I don't think it's wise for the county to invest that $420,000 into the private business of Anson Rescue Squad. So I don't know where, I don't know what the board's actions will be from here moving forward. It's kinda open for discussion on how the board wants to proceed with that. Yes?
Just one other option that may be looked at, I don't know if there's anything there either, but these local trusts that we have in Anson County. My way, and I feel like this is probably something that the Rescue Squad themselves would need to go after as opposed to the board of county commissioners, so I would say that the county management might could just mention that to them and see where they go from there. We're glad to do that and it should have indicated it would be more appropriate for them to, to make contact with those trusts and make an application however is required.
Right, right. Okay, I think one of the issues, and I don't know about these foundations you speak of, but I think one of the issues was the nonprofit status of the Rescue Squad was kinda hindering them from obtaining some funds.
Yeah, that's true, 'cause one of the other entities I did, I did mention and several others that are too numerous, was the Golden Leaf Foundation, which you know of, and we've made applications for other entities, including the schools and SBCC, for those, but you have to be 501(c)(3) or else a bona fide government entity to get those funds. And I have talked with them personally, like I have all the other entities, and they said no.
Okay, all right. So at this time, it's your recommendation that we not fund the $420,000 since, out of our general fund?
With that being the case, if the Rescue Squad is not successful in securing the funds, finding that $400,000 to keep them in operations, then I have talked to our emergency EMS director and he has indicated that he has got a truck, an ambulance if you will, all he would need would be the additional personnel to, to put on, to operate that on a 24/7 basis, just like our others do. So that is another option if you want to consider that.
Okay. Is that something that we need to approve as a board or that's, I guess, a managerial duty that you'll handle?
What do you think, Mr. Force?
Manager can handle that.
Okay. And I just wanna clarify for the citizens listening and for the audience that will be listening tomorrow, by us not funding the Anson Rescue Squad, the services will not be, I guess, cut out of our county. We do have an Anson EMS agency that the county owns, that we are responsible for, that we made a large investment into in our last budget. So the services provided to the citizens will not change. The ambulance that may be coming to your house may change, but other services you receive as a citizen will not change. We contract with Anson Rescue, which is a third party, a private company, that's what we've been discussing, is not contracting with them anymore, doing it in-house, so to speak. So at this time, there's no recommendation to fund it, so the board needs to take no action on that?
That is correct, and if it pleases the board, I have one other item that will take but a couple minutes.
Okay.
That is, every county in America, and there's over 3,000 of them, as well as all the towns, cities, villages, et cetera, are required by a certain date to send a letter out concerning lead service lines. And those lead service lines, not only includes lead service lines, but also the old, the old-fashioned galvanized lines, as well as lines that have lead soldering. And we have done that and we've had a number of questions from folks that have asked us about it. I have talked, and so that was, those letters went out. Now there's often advice that there's probably people that consume our water, but maybe did not receive that in their meal. So I have talked to Ms. Cannon and she's agreed that she can post it, that letter on the county's website for those people that are sending clients to look there. And also, we're gonna put it on Facebook, because obviously there are occasions where people nowadays get their news from Facebook and other social platforms, if you will. So we're gonna do that. We're also gonna have a meeting here real soon with our engineers and come up with some other information that we will be sending out to, to our residents and our people that are on the county's water system.
Okay, so, all right, I appreciate the update on that. And that is, I guess, a state and federal, that's a federal mandate technically.
Right.
So, and that's just ironic, I got Hazen and Sorry right here in front of me, but that's who we contracted with to perform our lead service line inventory.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, well, we'll look forward to some more information on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on to the chairman's report. I just have one item, I wanted to let the citizens know that last Thursday and Friday, myself and Commissioner Woodburn attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference in Raleigh. We'll have some information that we're gonna present out to the citizens and the rest of the board, once we receive it from the NCACC. There were several goals, I don't know how many, there was several that were voted on. Obviously, every one that is voted on does not move forward to the legislation, so once we receive the prioritized list of those goals, we'll present that to the board and to the citizens, so you can see what, I guess, what we did last week. And Mr. Woodburn was our voting delegate, so I was just there to support him. So, but I, we did have representation from Anson County, which I was proud to see, because there were a lot of counties that were not represented. I think it was only...
Sixty, sixty-three was the count of counties present.
Yeah, so 63 counties out of 100 were present at the Legislative Goals Conference. So I was glad to be there with Anson County and support Anson, represent Anson County. All right, that's all I have on the chairman's report. We'll move into commissioner concerns. Yes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I was approached by a citizen and he had questions about a, about a landfill, which his question was, and his concern was that they no longer take paint, used oil, batteries, antifreeze, things along that line. And he indicated to me that, I guess he has some of these items that he disposes of, not really clear on how he does it, but he gets them to Durham, North Carolina, to dispose of. So I would like for the county manager, if he would just kinda check into the landfill and kinda see what's going on with this. I know at one time they did take paint and used oil and that type of thing, but I don't know about the rest of the items that were mentioned. Just kinda see what's going on and where we might be able to go with that as possible.
I'll be glad to do that. And there's some counties, from my information, that actually do something that's akin to an amnesty day, where they'll set aside certain days of the month for people to bring in the paints and the oils and so forth, and then they mix it with sand and dispose of, and I'm not sure exactly where they take it, but they supposedly do it according to federal and state guidelines.
That's right, and I know at one time in the past, our landfill, if you took paint out there, it either had to be dried out or you had to fill the can or container with sand. And they were taking it that way and this gentleman also mentioned the fact that there are counties, so he was familiar with a county that does that like once a month, so I'd like just kinda to see what's with our landfills, since that citizen brought that up and had a concern about it.
I'll do it.
Okay. Any other commissioner's concerns? Yes?
This would be a good time for me to just say thank you to all the hard-working citizens in Anson County. I was blessed to get to work with y'all, blessed to get to work with the team sitting up here. Thank my life, she was always supportive during the times when I needed some help, which is most of the time, and I'd like to thank my, most of all, Savior for guiding me in my life and I appreciate everybody.
Thank you. All right, any other commissioner's concerns? All right, well, at this time, we are gonna move into some presentations. I've been told we've got two commissioners that are retiring, so we're gonna to honor and recognize them tonight. So Ms. Cannon, do you have, do you have a plaque?
You'll do Harold first?
Yeah. We'll just present it to him at his seat and then we're gonna get up and take a picture of, once we get both plaques out, so. All right. Just, we're gonna present a plaque to Commissioner Smith and then Commissioner Bricken in honor of their service to the constituents of Anson County. I couldn't think it would be no better than to have our longest-serving commissioner honored by our second longest-serving commissioner. I'm gonna ask Mr. Woodburn if he would present the plaque to Mr. Smith. And I told him earlier, he probably knows a few stories on Mr. Smith that I don't know.
Oh, and that's, you know, whenever, Mr. Chairman...
Come to the podium, sir.
Well, Chairman Collins mentioned this. And I've been giving it some thought since then and the one thing that I've come up with is that Mr. Smith is serious about his job, so I don't really have any jokes or anything like that to say, other than the fact that, there's a couple things I've heard him say over the years, and he must be, he must know what's going on, 'cause I didn't hear it tonight. Anytime we got a crowd like this, he was like, what they doing here? And the other thing that I really respected about him is he keeps the board on track. If something is getting ready to happen and he knows that it's, we're getting a little bit out of line or we're getting out of our territory, he's gonna say, you know that's not right. This is the way it's supposed to be done, and I have to give him credit. He will be correct, he's always right there.
Thank you.
I've known Harold for a lot of years and I got really to know him once I got on the Board of Commissioners. He is now the longest-serving commissioner in North Carolina, I think 40, 42, 44 years. And he's gotten a lot of awards over the years and I didn't realize, and I looked this up, that he's, well, I didn't write the year down, but at any rate, he was awarded the, awarded the Long Lake Pine by Governor Roy Cooper.
Thank you.
He's also recognized by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners as one of the longest-serving commissioners in North Carolina. And I think we're all aware of the fact that NC DOT ain't got that together yet because And I think we're all aware of the fact that NC DOT ain't got that together yet because of the scale saying Salisbury Street. Salisbury Street, the name is going to be changed to Harold C. Smith. And we know that since he's been here, he made his way to Anson County in nineteen sixty-seven. And since that time, he has served the citizens of...
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Been here fifty-nine years.
Thanks, sir.
I moved here as a civil rights fighter.
All right. Good deal, and you've been doing that ever since.
Thank you, thank you.
That's the whole thing.
I started with Bowman High School to make sure that it was an integrated school. Then I served first with F.J. Cloud from Lyeville, an honorable citizen. Then I served with Hank Drake. I served with Anna Balkam. I served with, uh, Ro, uh, Ross. Ross, I remember, Ross Streeter. And I served with Mr. Sykes of Mansville. And so I'm grateful, and to have served with all those good people. And I thank all of the people here tonight for coming, and thank you for being a part of my family. I consider you my family. Then I have my daughter here and my granddaughter here. We thank you, and we want to thank you for the service we are running to you during the fifty-nine years we have been here. We give you nothing but the best.
Come on, come on.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I think the one thing that Commissioner Smith did not mention, and I hope I'm getting this right, because I know you've mentioned it to me more than one time, is the fact that you and several others in the community, you were the one that led the charge to get district representation for the Board of Commissioners in Anson County.
That's correct. We brought action against the county, and we won the suit. And so I'm grateful for that. We had, Mr. Lee Allison served on the board with me, and I talked with him one day. I said, "Mr. Allison," I said, "the black people are not represented in this county." And I said, "Now, I wish you would go with me in this suit, and you've been a principal of black children, white children, and all children. And you know everybody ought to be represented." So after we finished talking, he said, "I'm going to sign it." And he signed it, and we had district representation up until this time. So we thank you.
Great job.
We thank you, and we thank your family for letting us have you for these years. And we know you're still going to be on the scene. And it's my pleasure, and I'm honored to present this plaque to yourself. The Anson County Board of Commissioners recognizes Commissioner Harold C. Smith since for thirty-two years of dedicated service to the citizens of Anson County, presented November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
We want to recognize Ross Streeter as being one of the civil rights workers, because he is one that we bought this Confederate flag up out here on this courthouse, and we moved it. We voted, and we moved that Confederate flag out here on the courthouse. Thank you.
All right.
And Ross is here.
Appreciate that, good job. All right, Mr. Bricken, I don't have any good stories to tell about you like he did Mr. Smith. I've only known Mr. Bricken for four years, but I can tell you, once you talk with Mr. Bricken, you become a friend. He's been nothing but a friend to me, a mentor, a leader, a guider. He's, his impact's going to be felt on this county for a long time. His infrastructure knowledge, his utility knowledge that he's helped us with, I think we're going to feel the effect of that for a long time to come. I don't think I've ever met a man who's more dedicated to what he's doing than Mr. Bricken is. He goes a hundred and ten percent. It don't matter if it's sweeping the floor. He's a hundred and ten percent. And so I appreciate that, and I've learned a lot from him, and I hope the rest of the board appreciates his service to the community, and I hope the citizens appreciate that service. I also want to thank his wife for allowing him to serve, because I know firsthand, as the rest of us sitting up there, your spouse is just as much a part of the commissioner's seat as they are. Without the spouses, the commissioner couldn't be there. So I want to say thank you, and I appreciate your service. And I'm going to present this, Anson County Board of Commissioners recognizes Commissioner J.D. Bricken for his four years of dedicated service to the citizens of Anson County. At this time, I would like for all the commissioners to come to the front. We'll take a group photo, and then we'll have a time for anybody in the audience that wants to take a picture with either commissioner. There'll be a photo opportunity then. And then we'll open the floor for any recognition after that.
Okay.
Then we're going to come to the front, take a picture.
I think I did you, Rob Michael Jordan.
You introduce me to him, sir. You introduce me to him.
Oh, where's your plaque? Hold your plaque up.
Can we get one with our clerk in there? Y'all give her a hand, and she come forward.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, what I'm going to do, I'm going to open the floor. If you'll just raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and you can come to the podium. I want to say, feel free to say whatever you would like. Let's just keep it, you know, keep it in honor and respect of our two retiring commissioners, please. So at this time, the floor is open. So, yes, sir, Mr. McLeod.
I've been here, Harold, now for forty-five years. You know, I came here with Ms. Haley, and she showed me all the stories about starting the business. But I've always watched you, and I've always admired you.
Thank you.
It's amazing how something has to be wrong when you did it your way and got so much criticism, because you just wanted the best for your people.
Yes.
That's all you ever want. And I just heard the story about you and Mr. Allison, and he knew
Yes.
that the best for all people is to be represented. And so every time I think of a hero, anyone that I want to be like, Harold Smith.
Thank you.
Because Harold Smith, you stood out when a lot of people wouldn't stand out.
Thank you.
And because God blessed you and protected you.
Yes, yes.
And your economics were not affected by you standing up for the truth.
Thank you.
We are much better placed. And it saddens me that the legislations that you and Mr. Allison came about, because it was hard to get representation.
Yeah.
We're going to change the formula. And I hope that it's what people actually believe. Now, I hope that with all my heart, soul, and mind.
Yes, yes.
I hope that we think we have come so far that we all still treat it equally. I hope that's what we do.
Yes.
But I still believe that to get equal representation, what you and Mr. Allison did, we need.
Thank you.
So thank you for stepping out.
Thank you.
Thank you for being bold enough, and thank you for representing
Thank you.
your people and all people.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Bernie Bennett, I see you out there.
Hello, friends.
Hello, friends. I'm Sandra Osana, and I'm the head of the Republican Party in Anson County. And I just want to say a few words. Mr. Bricken, we just love you to death. And you always reminded me of the character Atticus Finch in To Kill a Mockingbird. And when I met you, it was like you were Atticus, and that says everything. And I know you are a great commissioner, and you always did your homework and made sure your facts were correct, and I know about that. You made decisions and recommendations based on these facts, and you were very unbiased in all your recommendations. And that is a great commissioner. And I know when you ran for commissioner, first thing you told everybody is you're going to serve only one term. And you were very adamant about that. And when the term came up, everyone was saying, "Are you kidding? Are you kidding? You know, you didn't, you were not serious, and you said, 'Yes, I was.'" And then you did something very few people do, and what you did is you replaced yourself with a very fine young man, Mr. Leary. And I'm telling you, I got to know him at the polls and a little bit other places, and he is a fine young man. And you did right for this commission by talking him into running. And I think he will be a great commissioner, Mr. Leary. And it's very important that Anson County has a balance of power. And I welcome Mr. Ellaby. Mr. Ellaby, I welcome you. You are my commissioner of district six, and I got to know you during the polls. And I really enjoyed our differences, but, you know, we also had common ground. And Charlie says, if you watch a little Fox News, you're going to do very well. Fox News, okay.
And he, he's taking my...
If you were, if you watched Fox News, you wouldn't be saying that.
And he's taking my place up here on the board.
And Mr. Mims, you are a man of great integrity, and we really appreciate everything that you're doing for our county. The Republican Party, I'm talking for them, and me, and Mr. Woodburne. I only hear wonderful things about you from those two guys and everybody else. And congratulations on winning, you and Mr. Mims. And let me see what else I got to say. And as far as all the commissioners, old and new, we thank everything you're doing, and God bless you and help in Anson County to prosper and go forward. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir. Mr. Ellaby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
She called my name, I said, "I guess I'll go and speak."
That's good.
Greetings to you all. I did want to come tonight and send my gratitude to a legend, Mr. Harold C. Smith. He is a legend in this community, and he's been serving longer than I've been alive. We speak volume of his tenacity and his drive, and a lot of things that he's done to help this community that we'll never know, because he'll never tell. And we need more people with that heart to serve. I want to personally say thank you. I said thank you, you, man to man, but I wanted to say it in a public setting, to let you know how much I appreciate your thought and your consideration.
Thank you.
For me to be the one to come behind and serve such individuals yourself.
Thank you.
And it means a lot to me that you would consider me, and these citizens of Anson County, they voted also for me. And I look to do my best to serve this board and to serve Anson County as a whole with integrity and with ethics,
Yes.
which is what we need to see come back to our county if we're going to go in the right direction. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a portion of a poem you say, "All of my business down there at the front row home." And it's just one end of a portion of a poem that you said. And you said that the best of guys today are not the ones that tell you.
But the one that shows the way.
But the one that shows the way. And you offered it by saying, "Thank you."
Thank you.
For showing us the way. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say good evening to everybody.
Evening, everyone.
What some people don't know about me is I'm shy and don't get out much. Tonight, I wanted to come to this meeting and thank Mr. Smith for being the example he has been to me.
Thank you.
I've always admired Mr. Smith. He used to come on the radio in the mornings, and I said, "Mom, who is that man?" He's got such a strong voice and with such power. And then when we realized he was the undertaker. It did change, Mom, it did change, it did change. I was still excited about knowing him, especially after I saw how he handled his business. So I grew up admiring the way he handled his business. And then once I realized he was also a civil rights leader, I really said, "That's somebody I want to grow up and be like. I want to be bold, and I would like to be just."
Thank you.
So if we can learn to be bold without justice, we can care, we can be, we can be great. Father Martin Luther King said, "Everybody can be great because everybody can serve." Mr. Smith, you're a great man.
Thank you.
God bless you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So good to be back home. This is home, no matter where I go, Anson County will be home. My name is Norita Bell.
Thank you.
And I'm here to represent the Bell family as Papa Smith is our Papa. My brother, Attorney Asa Bell, has sent some words, and I will share those. And he said this, "Congratulations, Papa Smith. The citizenry of Anson County has been blessed by your dedicated and committed public service. Thank you for always being a voice for all people, especially the most vulnerable. Blessings upon you." My sister, Dr. Florita Bell Griffin, has sent the following greetings as well. Dear Papa Harold C. Smith, he is our Papa. He is our Papa. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement as Anson County Commissioner. Your dedicated service to Anson County and the state of North Carolina has been an inspiration to many. many. Your leadership, love, and commitment to the community will be remembered and cherished for years to come. Wishing you all the best in this next chapter of your life. And I'm the youngest. I'm Norvita, as already stated. Abidah is my oldest friend. She's my first friend in life. Fifty-five years of sisterhood. Love you. Congratulations to you, Papa Smith, on your retirement as an Anson County Commissioner. For over thirty years, you have served and served well, and you have dedicated much time, energy, and effort into helping make Anson County a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you in particular for being a voice for the marginalized and the disenfranchised.
Thank you.
You have been such a source of encouragement for me and so many. May the Lord continue to bless you, sir. Job well done. We love you.
Thank you.
Let us all remember to walk humbly, love mercy, and let's do justice for everyone. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
If any of you in here are concerned about how I got to Anson County, of course, it was via a black and silver car, and it had a light on top.
Yes, yes.
Now, let me tell you this. There is no politics with the North Carolina Highway Patrol. And the reason I know that is every four years when the Colonel would appoint a new Colonel, the Governor would appoint a new Colonel, that new Colonel would tell us, "There's no politics on the highway patrol." So there can't be, other than the fact that I found out that a gentleman by the name of Mr. Harold C. Smith had a whole lot to do with me coming to Anson County.
Thank you. Thank.
Thank you kindly.
Thank.
I appreciate that.
Thank.
I, I say that because I've had two folk up here that share a life for the profit of Micah just like I do. And I read a commentary not long ago on Micah six and eight. And one of the things that struck me in that for my two good friends on this board, J.D. Bricken and Harold Smith, is that one of the things that Micah six and eight will require you to do occasionally is go get the grain. It requires you to speak what's in your heart as well as what's in your mind. That may not be the popular thing to do. And I wanna thank J.D., I wanna thank Mr. Smith both.
Thank you.
For being the men that you are.
Thank you.
For being able to stand up and say yes when no was the popular answer.
Yes.
And in contrast to that, saying no when yes was the popular answer. Our county has been served well.
Thank you.
Our Lord said he came here to serve. Should we not follow any, in any less example than to serve? Whether we're a county commissioner or clerk of court or whatever we are, we all have that ability to serve. And I dare say that when I stand in front of my maker, he will mention what, if any service I gave to my brother. So, J.D., we are members of the same church, and we serve the same God.
That's right.
Mr. Smith, you introduced me to my first and very dearest friend on the highway patrol.
Yes.
He and I spoke yesterday.
Yes. Thank you.
I still enjoy his counsel.
Thank you.
Larry Britton is an honorable man, and I love him dearly.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you bringing the two of us together.
Yes, sir.
I wanna thank everybody on this commission. You are the caretakers of the business of Anson County.
Thank you.
And there are many days when it goes unnoticed and when it's not appreciated. And I wanna tell you face to face in front of everybody in here that I appreciate every one of you. God speak to it.
Thank you. Thank you. You stayed here long enough to get a girl from Anson County.
I did. I had to write her a ticket to get her.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Bennett is here to speak for Anson County, Mr. Smith. For lives real. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
As a county employee of fifty-four years for Anson County, I was honored to work under the leadership of Mr. Smith for a large portion of those years. I was also honored to serve with him on several committees, Anson County, American Committee, as he donated funds and to help fund the organization. He has always been vital with dealing with different families, on a personal level. And we can't thank you enough for what you have given to Anson County, and words cannot express how we feel about you as a person. You, you displayed yourself as no respect of persons.
Thank you.
You, you were just, you were just you.
Yeah.
You never forgot where you came from, and I love you for that.
Thank you.
So many times, we forget where we come from, but you have never forgotten where you come from because you love everybody, and that's why we love you. Mr. Bricken, I love you as well because in Ansonville, I've worked with your counterparts up in Ansonville, and, and you have been an inspiration in that area, and we just thank you for that. Thank you for what you do for everybody, not just single out a certain group, but for everybody.
Thank you.
And that's why you're so important to Anson County. And I just pray that the entire board will see that, that it's everybody.
Yes.
Not just political, but for everybody, because everybody is somebody.
Yes.
We thank you, Brother Smith, and you call me out, but I get you.
Thank you. Your daughter was my nurse up in the hospital.
I know. You know when you fill it up.
Yeah. That's my granddaughter.
If y'all didn't know, I'm his granddaughter. Papa, I am so honored to be your granddaughter. You lead with such dignity. Your dedication, determination, drive, commitment will never be forgotten, as you have touched the lives of so many in so many different ways. Know that your legacy continues to live through me, Mama, and Timothy. You are truly a man who is often imitated but never, ever duplicated. I aspire to be an advocate, leader, and trailblazer, just as you have been, creating pathways to elevate the black community. I love you, and I am so grateful to have been able to bear witness to the amazing things that you have done, not only in my life, but in Anson County.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess I'll end this on, Commissioner Bricken, I'm so sorry you had to sit through all this. Congratulations, congratulations on your retirement. Having a little difficulty, so I wrote what I wanted to say down because I sometimes start to cry, but I stand before you not only as the daughter of Commissioner Smith, but also as a former resident of District Seven. Thank you, Daddy, for your outstanding leadership and representation. Over the past thirty-two years, I have witnessed your willingness to advocate for not just your district, but for Anson County. You have worked tirelessly to unite various parties and racial groups for the greater good of our community. Additionally, you have consistently addressed the needs of your constituents and those from other districts who needed access to their commissioner and was unable to reach them. Thank you for embodying such admirable dedication. Thirty-two years is a significant duration of service, and while you express your readiness to seek reelection, my children and I desire to spend more time with you. This decision was not a result of any health concerns that you had, but acknowledges that you have accomplished everything that you have set out to achieve in Anson County. Throughout your remarkable thirty-two-year journey, you've had the privilege of working alongside some genuinely exceptional commissioners, and I'd like to mention a few of them this evening. The late Jeff Cloud.
Yes.
The late Hank Drake.
Yes.
The late Leejie Allison.
Yes, yes.
The late Herman Colonel Little. The late Anna Balkum. Freddie Black, Jimmy Sims, Bobby Sykes, Ross Streeter, and Van Seem Robinson Sturtevant.
Yes.
Many times, you agreed to disagree with some of them, but your goal was always, but your goal was always to do what was in the best interest of Anson County. The song says, "Stand. After you've done all you can, you just stand."
Yes, yes.
Daddy, you put in all your efforts, and tonight, when you remove your name placard from your seat, be proud of your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Be proud of all the times your name and your picture have appeared on the front page of that Anson paper. Sometimes, not so many nice things to say. Be proud that you got district representation here in Anson County. It meant a lot.
Thank you.
Be proud of the legacy that you have set for Commissioner-elect Ellaby and for those after him to follow.
Yes.
I thank you for being my daddy. I thank you for being my role model. I thank you for being all that you are to so many, and you have never forgotten. Come in here with one pair of shoes and one suit.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Scott Balkum, a new home Baptist church, and I want to come tonight congratulating you, Mr. Smith, for your dedicated service in all those years. I've had the opportunity to come and open with a prayer and invocation at this meeting a couple times, and that's the only time I've met you, but I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
J.D. is a member of our church, but much more than that, to me, I wanna just say, J.D., I'm proud of the way you have served the county.
Yes, yes.
The way you've served your community, but much more than that, the way you've served your Lord. I know that you have served with great dignity, great commitment, but more than that, great love.
That's right.
In the times that things are the hardest, that's when we need to love the most.
Yes, yes.
Sometimes, we don't understand what God is doing, but we know that he's always working. My prayer is for each and every one of you that you would keep your eyes upon Christ.
Come on.
No matter what's going on in our lives, no matter what's facing us, elections, politics, our children, our grandchildren, we need to serve the way Jesus Christ served us.
Oh, yes. Yes.
He came here not to be served, but to serve.
Sure.
And that's, I think that's what you guys do well together. So I pray that we will be united, we will not let conflicts tear us apart. And I see in God we trust up here. Pray God for that. I pray that we'll have opportunity very soon that we'll put God back in all the places that he's been removed from all the time. God bless you, J.D. I love you. I know that your prayer life has gotten stronger over these last four years. I've seen that, and I don't say that to be funny by any means. J.D. and I have talked a lot. We've prayed a lot, and I know that his, his commitment to the county and to his Lord and Savior has been.
Yes, yes.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your prayers.
And I'll say one more thing. No matter what color you are creed, you are welcome a new home Baptist church anytime. We'd love to have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
J.D., I met you when my wife first got on the, the board, and you've always treated me with tremendous kindness. You took me out to the wildlife refuge, showed me all the good hunting spots that I won't tell anybody else about. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Wow. I've, I've only been in this county about eight, about ten years now, I think.
Yes.
And I met you through my lovely wife, Priscilla, who is a commissioner. You've been an inspiration since day one. Martin Luther King Jr., Major Evans, John Lewis, Fannie Lou Hamer.
Thank you.
Ida B. Wells, Martha Max. These are but a few of my heroes.
Yes.
I never, ever met them. Never had the opportunity to shake their hands. Never had the opportunity to tell them, "Thank you for the fight, the good fight."
Yeah.
But I get to stand in front of you tonight.
Come on.
Thank you.
And say thank you to one of my living heroes.
Yeah.
A civil rights advocate. Wow. I mean, that's just an honor. That's a privilege, and you couldn't have, you couldn't have scripted this. So I'm so glad to know you. I, I see how you handle your business, your family, and I, and I love you for that.
Thank you.
And I know you're gonna continue to fight, and this is just a, a small token for my wife and I, and I just wanted to say thank you for your service to this county. And do you want me to give this to him or y'all?
Beverly, would you take it from me, please? Thank you.
If you want a picture with you, you can go off.
Okay. Thank you. That'd be great.
God bless you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Appreciate you, brother. I gotta get out of this, too.
Thank you. Ross, I'm glad to see you.
Glad to see you.
Man, he'll be nervous when he say that.
I don't know where to start, but. Harold Smith and I started here thirty-two years ago.
Yes, yes.
Nineteen eighty-eight. I think we was, uh, come on after the district representation started.
Yes.
And it's been a pleasure working with, Harold, working with you over thirty-two years.
Thank you.
And I hate to see you go. It's the time that all these things come to an end. But it's just so many things I could tell, but it's not fraught. Well, Harold, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Bricken, I know you're short time, but you done a great job, and I heard good things about you. And, and, and congratulations again, and hope you have many more years. And, but I'm just, I'm lost for words tonight.
Thank you.
We give honor to you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
To J.D., some of the things that we just wanna say tonight, whenever I came on the board, we would get, Denise, what do you call it? What would we get at Christmas time, the little bonus that you could help somebody?
Yeah.
J.D., Mr. Smith, Lawrence Gaitwood would give me theirs, Jarvis Woodburn, to help with Toys for Tots, feeding the homeless, different things. They would give me theirs before we left out of here to help with feeding the homeless in different projects we were doing. They didn't have to, but they would give it to me in Toys for Tots, all it. We thank God for what you did and what you're gonna continue to do. Cause I know, hustle, look out, uh, uh, Mr. Ross Austin to meet you, they, they not going home to sit down. When you believe in what you do, you keep doing it.
Yeah.
That's it. You're not doing it for a check, cause my Lord knows you don't make nothing be enough. For real. For real. Am I right, man? Out of my chain with the, the Pink People water bill. Well, look at here. It takes it. But we just thank God for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, for what you did in the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I, I wanna congratulate you on your retirement. And Mr. Smith, my mom sent me here to tell you that she, she sent me here to tell me, tell you that, so I can't talk in front of everybody, but she said to tell you that she would appreciate everything that you done, and he delivered my sister in nineteen seventy-five. Yeah, my mom and my sister, they had, they had weather or something.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, the honor to have came across. She told me, "That's why I tell that story." But I remember you built the House of Love Bill, and that's when I started following you ever since, the House of Love Bill, and I knew that you was a genuine pioneer.
Yeah.
Hats off to both of you guys. Live like the best you can live. That's it. Live it to the fullest, and then when we get ready to see our makeup, we want them to say, "Well done," and step into his kingdom.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
All right. Congratulations, J.D., on your retirement.
All right, congratulations, J.D., on your retirement.
Thank you.
From the board. And Mr. Smith, Harold C. Smith, who he think on his personal secretary at DMV. He don't pay me no extra money. But he know I love him.
Thank you, we love you.
Anything I can do for him, I do. And I continue to, to look out for you.
Thank you, we love you.
They did not want to come up and speak, but this is from Mrs. Bunny and Priscilla.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Anyone else from the audience?
I just wanted to say Timothy says, "Congratulations, Papa." He can't be here, he at class today, but he says, "Congratulations," and he loves you.
My grandson, he's in Chapel Hill.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Good, uh, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And old Mr. Harold Smith, I just love you. You've been with our family for many years.
Thank you.
I was in the eleventh grade when you came to Anson County. And, uh, you've been here sixty-nine years.
Yes.
I remember every funeral home you had. I remember your other, your funeral home got blowed up. And, uh, you've just been a funny man at your, at the funeral. You never make a, you always made the family feel so good. Even though they're hurt so bad down in their hearts, you would always give them and say something, uh, something just to make them laugh. Even if you had to, I remember one time I was at a funeral and, uh, it was a real big funeral. It was my sister's funeral. And you went outside and seen how many people that was out there. And you ran back in there and you said, "Florine, sit down." And do you want me to take that little big old head of yours out there and put it in there? I said, "No, Mr. Smith, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down." But anyway, I just want to tell you that I love you, Evadne. And y'all have just been so good to every member of my family. I thank you, had every member of my family that's still wanting this stuff. And I hope it's not me you're going to need.
Thank you.
I'm not letting you take that right away. Florine, sit down. I'm the one told her to come.
We love you.
I love Mr. Smith.
I love you.
And my daddy loved him so much. And to all, thank you.
Thank you, we love you.
Evening. To you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Bricken, I don't know you, but I've heard some good things about you. So thank you for your service. Mr. Smith, you have been here, we have been here fifty-one years.
Yes.
And I've seen you grow from nothing to something.
Yeah, thank you.
And what stuck in my mind was when you said to me one day, you said that you made God a promise that if he let you prosper here in this town, that you would give his people, your people, the best that you can give.
Best that I can give.
And I have lived to see that you have given the best that you can give. And have enough people for us and everybody in order to do what you did. A lot of things have went unnoticed. A lot of things people do not know because you didn't want them to, to be out in the public like that.
Thank you.
But I thank you for being my family. I thank you for showing us the way. I thank you for your character. And I thank you for your integrity.
Thank you.
And I thank you so much from the Lou Allen family, the Marshland. We love you.
We love you.
Anyone else? All right, at this time, I have a, uh, some remarks to read from our representative, Mr. Mark Brody. He, uh, he was unable to be here tonight due to legislation taking place in Raleigh. Uh, so it says, "Dear J.D. Bricken, I am writing to express my heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering dedication and hard work as a member of the Anson County Board of Commissioners. Your ability to motivate others, make sound decisions, and listen effectively has truly been inspirational. Your empathy and genuine care for the community have not gone unnoticed. You have consistently shown a deep understanding and compassion for the people you serve. Your visionary leadership, addressing current needs while also envisioning a future bill on these foundations, has been instrumental in Anson County's progress. Your accountability to the citizens and sense of responsibility are commendable, and it is clear that you have fostered remarkable growth and development. Your efforts in addressing budgetary concerns and securing grants have significantly benefited this county. Your key role in obtaining a five million dollar grant for the American Rescue Plan Act to upgrade the county's water filtration plant, aiming to improve water quality and support future growth, is particularly noteworthy. Additionally, your involvement in enhancing the county's utilities, including, uh, securing funds for an asset inventory assessment and sewer improvements, demonstrates your commitment to our community's well-being. As you leave the county commission, it is evident that Anson County is better off because of your service. Thank you for your dedication, hard work, and visionary leadership. Anson County is fortunate to have had you guiding us toward a brighter future. Warm regards, Representative Mark Brody."
Thank you.
To apologize for not being here. So at this time, is there anyone else in the public that would like to honor our two retirees?
All right, Mr. Lou.
Good evening to everyone. As a department head in the great county of Anson, I would like to say to the county commissioners, to Commissioner Bricken, thank you for your service to District One, Big City of Burnsville. Thank you for all that you've done there. Thank you for your commitment to doing your job excellent. Uh, if you want anybody that's going to research and question and question until he can't question anymore, this is your, this is your gentleman. And, and I appreciate that because he seeks to be, seeks to understand and to know what you're talking about and what he can do to help you. So I appreciate that, that you have done. Thank you to, uh, Mr. Harold C. Smith.
Thank you.
There are not enough words other than thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you.
Thank you for your wisdom. And like everyone else has said, thank you for being an example to many in the county of Anson. Thank you for your support, um, in the past for the Department of Social Services because you know that there are great needs of people in this county. So then, thank you for all that you have done to help make a difference in Anson County. God bless each of you, heaven continue to smile upon you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Here no one else? Um, at this time, I am, well, I'm going to read this statement first and then I'm going to adjourn. Everyone is invited to partake in some light refreshments after the, uh, the meeting, after we adjourn. Um, behind the door, behind Mr. Forbes and Mr. Saltzman over there, you'll enter into the, uh, room, there's some light refreshments if you will. If you want to partake in the refreshments, just come back into the boardroom. That way, everybody's not in the hallway blocking the elevators and stuffs. Um, but please feel free to, to enjoy the refreshments. Um, at this time, if there's no other business to conduct, I'm going to ask Mr. Smith if you'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to do so.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Smith. Mr. Bricken, would you like a second? All right, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. I don't think there's going to be any discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you, thank you.